We're going to move on to our 6.14 item. Our four o'clock item, which is A, consideration of an update from the Food Insecurity Ad Hoc Work Group, and B, approval of a local disaster declaration due to food insecurity, and C, approval of additional funding for hunger relief, and D, direction to staff. And we have our Social Services Director, Rachel Delman Parsons here, and I will turn it over to her at this point.
Hello, Board. I wasn't expecting to be up next to that. My program manager, Tara, just-
Mike, Rachel, Mike.
I'm not close enough, I think. My program manager, Tara Gandolfo, is here with me today for CalFresh. She is coming right back, so just give us a second. I'm going to jump on your Zoom as well so that I can share my slideshapes. So, joining us, panelists. Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and start my screen share. Okay. So, as your board knows, a couple of weeks ago, you formed the Food Instability Ad Hoc Work Group, and I have been the chair. There have been many wonderful and valuable partners to this ad hoc work group, and their names are all there. It's quite a long list. Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Sabatier were both on that work group and very helpful, as were Matthew Rothstein, and Trevor Muckel, and Stephen Carter, and of course, my lovely Tara Gandolfo, who is our CalFresh program manager. You all get special mentions. And again, there's many, many more helpful folks who assisted us in this time. So, we're agenda items. I would like to withdraw the request for disaster declaration. At the time we submitted this agenda item to your board, the very last day to get it on regular agenda, the shutdown had not yet resolved, and litigation was still in process regarding November CalFresh benefits. That has since resolved. Disaster declaration is not going to bring us anything that we don't already have access to. I later learned in discussion with the CDSS Food Branch that the disaster branch's interpretation that a declaration would give us access to food boxes was incorrect for this kind of disaster. So, no extra resources available. Are we okay with my withdrawing that?
We're good with my withdrawing it?
Yeah. Okay. I just didn't know if there was more I needed to do. Okay, so what have we done in this ad hoc regarding food relief efforts? So, as you know, this kind of kicked off when CalFresh benefits for November did not issue and were delayed. Your board approved $40,000 a week, $80,000 total, and our work group hit the ground running. That was approved on the 4th. We met on the 5th and had funding through Redwood Empire Food Bank and ordered MREs by the 6th. So, moved really quickly to get things in place to meet the needs of our community. The work group had initially thought to fund community partners in mass feeding efforts, but after having observed how popular and how in need food distributions were earlier that day at our food banks, we shifted our strategy when we met on the 5th to boosting food at our local food pantries. So, of the $80,000, and I have more details, but $70,000 was allocated to Redwood Empire Food Bank to both boost our local food pantries as well as our food banks, MREs, Meals Ready to Eat, our allocation. We decided to purchase $9,500 worth of those. And lastly, bus passes, $500 worth of those, the 10 punch bus passes, because we heard from many members of the public that although food distributions are available, they had difficulty getting to them. So, I'll talk about these two first because they are a little less impactful. Now, MREs have been a struggle because the vendor still has not delivered them, although we ordered them on the 6th. So, yeah, it's wonderful. I think we're probably not the only one trying to get MREs. They were originally supposed to be delivered Monday, the 10th. As of today, they are still not delivered. We ordered two different batches. One was ordered by admin, and then I also ordered three pallets. So, admin ordered two pallets. I ordered three pallets. My admin fiscal deputy director right now is attempting to cancel our order so that we can purchase MREs from somewhere that will actually deliver them. So, more to come on that. We have heard the public is looking forward to them. We discussed this with the ad hoc when we met yesterday, and we do want to move forward with getting them and making them available to the public. We just need to find a vendor who can make that happen. So, thankfully, the shutdown resolves, and more to come on that. And then the 10 punch bus passes were related to needing transportation specifically around North Shore because the distributions up there are once a month, and people have difficulty getting between the different sites. They do allow you to walk up as well as drive up. We verified that. Okay. This is just a picture of one of the food distributions, the drive-up line. We're hearing from our partners. These are never before seen lengths. Many families are showing up well before the distributions begin to ensure they get food. This line has never spilled out onto Highway 20, and unfortunately, not all families could be served. We have some data a little further on regarding what that looks like, so much as we can glean. That's what you're seeing. So, Redwood Empire Food Bank, they have been a great partner. As soon as Tara reached out to them, they were ready to jump into action to help us out. We, like I said, had an agreement in place within two days of your board approving funding, and we focused on the local food pantries because we were trying to be mindful of what portion of the public was not being served. And they are trusted partners within our community that certain people may not feel comfortable going to the food distributions, whereas the food pantries may be more accessible to them, or perhaps more comfortable, or they prefer to go there. So, trusted community partners. Redwood Empire Food Bank also boosted food bank distributions in our area as well. We felt they were uniquely qualified to fulfill this role because they are large, they have significant access to resources, and they were able to move very quickly, and they did include $20,000 pass-on to our local food bank, the Clear Lake Gleaners. So, here's what it looks like. What Redwood Empire Food Bank has delivered and will be delivering in Week 2. So, total $70,000, Clear Lake Gleaners, $20,000, estimated total of 13.1 pallets. Week 1 delivery has already occurred. Week 2 delivery is anticipated on the 24th. Helping Hand, United Methodist Church, St. Peters in Kelseyville, United Methodist in Middletown, Woodland College, Middletown Senior Center, United Christian Parish, Kelseyville Presbyterian, and Community Care Clear Lake were all specifically targeted with this funding. Redwood Empire Food Bank also boosted food available in the Lucerne, Nice, and Upper Lake distribution sites when we reached out to them later and said, hey, there's a need here.
Can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
So, is Redwood Empire fronting the money? Because my understanding, yesterday, we haven't paid.
Correct. They agreed to bill. They're big enough that they could do that, so we didn't have to worry about figuring out purchasing orders or that kind of stuff. So, I prepared a letter of intent for them that says, we'll pay you if you agree to do this. And yeah, they will be billing us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, just some testimony from one of the partners who received funding from Redwood Empire Food Bank. I think Tara or her staff got this. Do you want to talk about it?
So, when we first talked to this church, we were just asking what they did and let them know, you know, if we were looking into anything, if we could get them any extra funding, would they do something? And he immediately said yes. And then the funding came through, and he called us, and he wanted to thank us, and actually thank you guys for providing that to them because they were able to add a day next week, and that they will be handing out 200 boxes, and it's going to include canned veggies, cranberries, chicken legs, whole fryers. And he does say, please bring bags if you're coming. But he wanted to call and just say thank you because there's a huge need, and he knew that, and he didn't know how he was going to be able to get that. So, he wanted to call and say thank you. So, I think it's huge from them and from the public just to see what is happening in the scale of what you guys have done. So, thank you.
Great direct impact right there. Okay, I talked about this already. I threw that out there. That was just the North Shore need. And also, it's important to point out that what Redwood Empire Food Bank is able to bring up here to Lake County is all donation-only supported. They are not our TFAP food bank, so they can't bring any of the state or federally-funded foodstuffs up here to us. That is only the Gleaners. Okay, what is the Gleaners done? They've been very busy too, as well as their subcontracted TFAP sites. So, the Finley site is the Gleaners' main site, and then these other areas are through subcontractors. So, the number served has significantly increased. I think they're close to double what they normally see. They do not currently have a mechanism to track how many families are turned away, but they agreed to try and do that moving forward. And in our Feeding Partners meetings, which are currently happening on Fridays, we look forward to receiving an update. We do have some estimated number of families that were unable to be served in a few of their distributions last, I think it was last week.
That's, I'm surprised at the Finley numbers.
It's their main-
That's where the main-
That's their main site. Yeah, that's where the Gleaners is located. So, people from everywhere will come there because that's their main distribution.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
They did plan, when we talked to them, to serve about 600 on that day, and had to scramble to get the other 193 backed together for people.
And still had to turn away.
And still had to turn people away. And I will also- I will also add, I was doing traffic that day, and I had several cars stop. And first of all, thank everybody for their time for being out there in the cold and potential rain. But also, they came two-plus hours earlier than they normally do because they knew it was going to be a heavier request from everybody, and the line didn't stop, and it went all the way down their street and around the corner, and it just didn't stop.
What was that day on?
That was Thursday, the 7th, I want to say.
So, it was just before the end of the shutdown?
Correct.
Okay, so people were worried.
And I think that one of the things that we also heard in there is that people in that line also were worried about being able to get distribution because they didn't either qualify for CalFresh because they have, like the one lady I talked to, she had social security and a pension, so she just made the cutoff. So, this is supplemental for her, and she had concerns that she wasn't going to get anything.
A lot of need out there. A lot of need. Okay, so Gleaners is gearing up to do what they can to support families for Thanksgiving. Last information we had, they're preparing 888. I do not know how that number came about.
That came from Gleaners.
For the November 20th distribution. They said they did receive some from the Motorcycle Club. We were not able to get a specific number from them as to how many turkeys they received. Some more to come on that, I hope. Social Services, we are providing staff to help with bagging tomorrow and traffic control. Tara and her wonderful crew are doing that. You want to talk about that?
Big shout-out to the Social Services team, first of all, because on top of doing their regular jobs, they're going out and they're getting up early and directing traffic or providing assistance with the bagging, and then going back and doing their regular jobs. So, when I asked who would like to do this, it's more, how many people do they need? And not necessarily everybody had to go, but Social Services is very proud to help people feed in our area. So, it's a big, huge shout-out to Social Services for our team for doing, get to the staff.
Okay, so in addition to the ad hoc, before the ad hoc even formed, I was trying to get everyone together and had called a Feeding Partners meeting, but to ensure everyone was available, it was a couple of weeks out. So, we launched a Feeding Partners meeting. We continued with that. Our first meeting was on the 7th, and we have continued to meet weekly on Fridays, and it has been a really great collaborative effort. I think it is a great thing for us to continue to do more moving forward. I don't know that we'll need to meet weekly, but right now, while the need is increased, we have been meeting weekly. And the whole purpose of this partners group is to info-share, identify resources. I know they're scarce, but knowing what everybody is doing out there, just so that we can get people pointed in the right direction is helpful in the first place. So, just a more collaborative environment for everybody who's trying to help the public out there with feeding insecurity. So, there is a Thanksgiving meals list. We just got it posted on our Facebook page. I think there are currently five different places we're aware of providing Thanksgiving meals. If you become aware of any other resources, we're just asking the public to let us know. It's posted on our Facebook page, which is Lake County Social Services, California. What's going on with CalFresh? You probably already know by now, but with the end of the federal shutdown, November benefits have issued, December will issue as usual, and there is, the litigation has essentially been dropped. The continuing resolution included legislation that ensures CalFresh benefits will issue in case of another shutdown occurring after the continuing resolution expires. It also contains some kind of thing about potentially allowing states and counties to request reimbursement for efforts around CalFresh backfill. So, I have asked CWDA Fiscal Committee for more information around that. I would love to pull down funding if we can. We have tracked my staff time, which is over 300 hours so far, and I do not have that information from any of our other departments, although I did give them the opportunity to provide that to me. So, food insecurity does continue to linger in Lake County. It was present prior to the shutdown. We were seeing an increased trend in unemployment and consumer prices. The cost of food in particular went up 3.1% over the last year. And just for frame of reference, the social security cost of living adjustment was only 2.8%. So, there is a residual effect. Sorry. Finances have been disrupted. I have a couple stories from families in a moment here. The school meals are also a concern. We've heard from many people, the free school meals are not available during the holidays. There's quite a lot of holidays in November and December where children will be without that resource. I think it's close to three weeks. And so, food banks are continuing to see increased demands. I do not think the Gleaners believes they're going to be any slower on the 20th. I think they're gearing for it to be very, very busy. So, I'll let Tara take the lead.
So, these are from your survey that you did, and this is from a coach. I can't see. "I was involved in youth football. A mother asked me if there was any way she could make payments to sign up her boys or pay at a later date due to the government shutdown. She was panic spending all of her cash aid." What I do want to point out is this was very common when we first were having the loss of CalFresh, was people figuring out what they were going to pay for and what they could use their CalFresh. CalFresh is supplemental, just as the food banks and everything else are. And so, if you're an individual and you qualify for the full benefit, it's only $292 a month. So, could you imagine feeding yourself on $292 a month? It's not very much. So, between the food banks and what everybody has experienced, I think that there is a lot of food insecurity happening, and I think that this just kind of pushed it over the edge for people. So, you want to do the next one?
Yes, this is the next one.
Oh, it is? I can't read it. Okay, you read it. I'll read it. Sorry, it's a trick for Tara's vision test. Okay.
And I failed. So, this is from a different demographic. This is a person who is on social security and SSI, and she let us know that she has been in line at the food bank for hours over years. Lives on a fixed income. Rent is expensive, and she says, "When I have to rely on more coming out of my pocket, that means not turning on the heater so that I don't have to pay for heating. It means not picking up as many prescriptions so I don't have to pay the copay. It means trying to spend more on credit cards for food." So, CalFresh and the food banks are a vital resource to her, and the current disruptions, you know, have created difficulty.
So, I have a couple more that are not on here. So, I had one, again, I was doing the traffic in the line, so I had a lot of people that stopped and talked to us. One of them was a panicked mom that was sent away from, I want to say Nice or Upper Lake, I don't remember which site, that ran out of food, and she was in a panic because she was told to get there by 10:00 after waiting that entire time in the other location and not getting food. So, they were able to help her, but I think that that's also something that's happening, right? Where they wait in line for a couple hours, and then they're told no, and then rush over to Finley to get food. And she said, without that support, she wouldn't be able to feed her family for the month. And that is not even including what she gets for CalFresh. It's just that extra that she gets from them. And then I had an elderly couple call because they had heard about the MREs, and they were one of the ones who didn't qualify for CalFresh because of what they got, and they heard that the MREs were there and that they could put that in because they take turns on what days they get to eat because they don't have enough food in their household for all the bills that they pay. So, this distribution that we're upping, and I explained to her where they were close to her, and she's going to be there early on Thursday to make sure that she's in line in time. But breaks my heart to do that. It's kind of why I'm in CalFresh, right, is to help people and to hear her and her husband are trading off which meals that they're eating. I know that that's not just their family. That happens a lot around our lake. So, again, it points out how grateful people are for that extra food that you guys have provided to them. So, I just wanted to point out a couple of those things.
Thank you, Tara. Going to make me cry, Tara.
Sorry.
Okay, so that leads us to discussion of temporary additional funding. The recommendation is mostly around the holidays, just related to the disruptions that the delay in CalFresh has caused, and the, you know, there's a bit of an economic crunch on people right now. So, the recommendation was $20,000 a week for the next three weeks to be discussed at your Board of Supervisors, December 9th, totally, you know, up for your discussion. The recommendation in total would be no longer than December 31st to provide this temporary additional funding, totally recognizing that it has to be temporary because the county doesn't have unlimited funding. But doing a little extra for the community during the holidays would be nice. If you have the ability to do it, there's certainly needs within our community. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Anything from the Board for discussion before we open it?
Fine.
I don't know that it was expressed, but I think the decision that was made to go through the Redwood Empire Food Bank, I think, really multiplied the potential of the dollars that were provided from the Board of Supervisors rather than, like we had talked about in that first meeting, which was possibly looking at gift cards, which wasn't necessarily with the direction we wanted to go, but that would have acquired a whole lot less and helped a whole lot less people. So, I think the process in which was chosen by the group was the right way to go. I met with a CalOES, I had a phone call with a CalOES individual who took part in the Friday meetings, giving us kudos for just working the system in the right ways. Unfortunately, we've had all the experience in the world, and we're behaving like there is an emergency, there is a fire, and we know how to come together. So, just wanted to pass that along, that CalOES, even though there is nothing they can do, because this was a Social Services situation, they were pretty impressed with the way that Lake County was able to come together. As far as the ask, I think that the stories you tell are not unique stories where people already spent the cash, what liquid they have on them or in their bank accounts, and that at the very least for this rest of the month that we need to make sure that we could recalibrate a system that made people make either bad decisions or the best decisions they could during that time period, right? Because there was really no knowing that this was going to end when it ended, and I'm glad that it did.
Yeah.
And even though I know it says that until September of next year, it has been budgeted for SNAP benefits.
Yes.
That does not mean in January 31st, when we're going to hit another shutdown, that there may not be some more politics being played that may pause or prohibit because we never got a full Supreme Court response to that, which again, might lead to that. So, I just think we need to be prepared because we know January 31st, it's probably going to happen again.
You never know, and that's one benefit of being both a smallish organization and having a lot of disaster experiences. We pivot very quickly, so that's good news.
And I think the MREs are great, even though they haven't gotten here. I think it will be good to have them on hand. I know that I mentioned that we should be tracking them. You said you are tracking them, and that's to make sure we always have at least a base amount, no matter what random emergency comes through. So, again, kudos. Thank you very much for everything that you've done, all the other partners that were at the table, Supervisor Pyska as well. And I think that we continue with the $20,000 and come back on December 9th.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, we just, you know, as it's been stated, there's residual effects to these events in people's lives, and recovery is not instantaneous. And we are in a really difficult time with school holidays. So, this is a $60,000 ask.
Grand total, yes. $20,000 per week for three weeks through December 9th. I'm sorry, Kent.
And so, where is that money coming from?
Poof. So, the prior $80,000, we were going to pull from the General Fund Special Projects. We were just going to budget transfer away from current contract amounts that we will replenish during mid-year. We would do the same thing for this transaction. We do currently have multiple contracts in that budget unit that will have enough extra, at least to wait until mid-year to be replenished.
Okay. I think we've got to do this.
So, that was going to be my question about the finances. Any other questions from Board members? We'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the room? We have Margot Kimbara. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much, Board and staff. Thank you for your foresight and anticipating unmet need and taking a very human response to our neighbors. Among our food insecure neighbors are those with immigration issues. It would be helpful for the Ad Hoc Committee to remind partners that some neighbors with immigration issues do not feel safe picking up food supplies. Measures that partners can take to keep neighbors safe are appreciated. Measures such as identifying private or employee-only spaces at food distribution sites would go a long way. And as far as our youngest neighbors, last I heard, the Department of Education, California, was asking for permission to feed kids during the holidays when a lot of the school lunch programs and breakfast programs are closed. I didn't hear what the ruling was. I know that was contentious on the federal level. But anyway, I applaud your efforts, and thank you so much for looking out for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Anyone else in the room? Johanna, do we have any hands online?
No hands.
No hands online. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the Board. And it looks like a withdraw on the declaration, so I'd look for a motion on the Item C, it looks like.
Yes, see, I move that we approve the additional funding for hunger relief of $60,000.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Motion carries 4-0. And can I get a copy of the slide that showed where that-
Yeah.
-money was going?
Yeah, I'll send it to the entire Board.
And Rachel, you and your team are total rock stars. Tara, thank you so much for all the long hours and for all the partners that have been coming together. It's really-
Thank you for your support, too.
Really amazing. Thank you. Really amazing. Thank you.